I'm not sure if you can hear us at the in-person meeting, but we cannot hear you whatsoever from the virtual attendance Zoom participant.
Ensuring that our scholars are able to participate and accommodate their acting. And lastly, that we give them a couple of time in terms of the long-term care. So when these principals come up and representing some of your leadership teams, so they have a mission to know who are to deliver your remarks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christian Jude. I am the principal here. I have the power of the South. Power of the Academy and our team to be here in this meeting. My staff is ongoing to building by one of the students. Introduced by Dean of Instruction, Mrs. Harvey Smith. And my operation manager, Mrs. Kelly Mitchell. We are the team, we are the team who's very proud here. A number of which are family members in the neighborhood. So everybody is, it's fine, they're for, and because I was born for not in. Some of these is the executive manager of the firm. I have this is Nette Fader, I think, the developer, one of our founding families. That also previously served on our work in the development of the stand. She is an alum for our business. She was in our first graduating class, two jobs senior at the South. This very experience rather involved, you guys will hear you can hear about that as well. I have this James Schumer, her father was in our second graduating class. There's Chad, who has two of the thousand person role in the world to be there for her. I have, we have seen this as well, she has two thousand currently involved in her thing and now taking over our life. In fact, you have this manager who says she has any father who's present in kind of group that we've done this last year. And she has twelve thousand people here. We already see that, we want to get a message to those that are something that makes me think. You know, very important now, we will probably have a little bit of that weekend, and then we have.
Good evening. My name is Christian Weathersby and I'm the principal of Momentum Academy Fox Park. It is an opportunity to see all today and share our reflections on our equal opportunities to Fox Park. As I reflect on my first meet where I immediately saw is I think of the people that are committed to Momentum Academy. It is a people of Momentum Academy who can't hear us today. My dean of instruction, Mrs. Harvey Smith, my dean of scholars, Mrs. Shelley. My son, Mrs. Amanda Simpson, and the rest of the Fox Park staff and faculty. Those who are present today and those who were not able to make it. The staff of scholars, the families and the community are local. And I thank you for making Momentum what it is today. And Momentum, it is our mission to keep scholars at the center of everything that we do. We are so proud to commit to an organization that values the foster relationship with parents, community organizations, and local businesses. The Fox Park community in which we serve is excited and appreciative that we're located there. I sent a smile at the thought of a summit from a local business person who gave free courtesy at our back to school again. He says, thank you for having me here these last two days. You guys are doing amazing things and put the great work. He turned and walked away with a huge smile. My dean and I proudly walked back into the building, smiled a dirty ear. It was a great feeling. Together, we make a difference in the lives of our scholars. Together, we provide the resources and community and opportunity they need to succeed in their academic careers. Together, we make sure they have the skill and education they need for our future. Momentum Academy provides a learning environment that meets the needs of our scholars in the Fox Park community. So in my wrap-up, I want to share a few reasons why our staff and faculty have chosen Momentum Academy. One of our staff members said her reason for choosing Momentum was for the positive movement in education. She claimed that there are so many great educators and leaders in this organization that continuously show me that they are here for our scholars. Momentum has provided me the chance to continue to grow. So, three seconds left, I'm going to end this. At Momentum Academy, Fox Park, missing me, that every scholar is a great education. We value to know that every member of our community walks into the Fox Park doors, that they feel welcome and safe. And we strive to build culture at Fox Park that is positive, optimistic, and actively supportive. Who are intentional that we provide additional support and character development and social emotional growth for everyone who deserves the protection.
See our leaders know how to visit. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for responding back. My name is Christian Jude. I am the principal of Momentum Academy Tower of E. I have been with the organization for five years. I have my. Our dean of instruction, Caitlin Cummins, who has been with us for two years. Our dean of scholars, Jennifer Evelyn, who has been with us for six years. And our school operation manager, who has been with us for five years. At Momentum Tower of E, we focus not only on rigorous academic excellence, but also on character development and building genuine relationships with our scholars. Family, staff, and community partners. We commend ourselves through our great pillars, character, confidence, and community. Every day begins with a focus on community during morning meetings. We build confidence through our rigorous instruction. You might see differentiated small room math instruction, scholars collaborating during rich discussions during reading, or hands-on science experiments. And just imagine opening the refrigerator and no worms ever arrived. Such a thank you treat. We weave character throughout our day. Some thank you to our chefs, the restorative practices around discipline, the spotlight on our scholars and staff who exhibit graduate aid. We want to thank you for this time. And Momentum Academy is always moving forward and we're excited for what our future looks like. Good evening, everyone. Man, I wish Dr. Mean would have told me one minute before this because it would have made my life a lot easier. Good evening. My name is Kayla Case. I'm the principal of Brown Oak Park. Tonight, my dean of scholars, Ms. Sarah Freeze, and my dean of instruction, Ms. Tori Lowery, and Dr. Melinda Van de Worf. I'll try to be quick. Momentum Academy is a pillar of our community and provides a safe haven for our families and our scholars. We know that alongside of academic excellence, our job is to make sure that our scholars are well-versed in other areas. So we are intentional about instilling our graduate names in them so that they leave us ready to be leaders in their community and future families. Our scholars are explicitly taught integrity, relationship skills, communication skills, how to be leaders, how to have empathy for one another, how to be critical thinkers, and to be self-aware. We put joy and positive relationships at the forefront of everything that we do. We know that research shows a great deal of benefit inside and outside of the school when inner-city children have trusted adults and peers that regularly meet next with them on a personal level. We build teams of not only educators, but advocates for our children and committed role models. We build teams of people that will fight for what they believe is best for the kids of St. Louis. And we believe that the education and the experience that we provide at Momentum Academy is paramount compared to schools that our students would be required to attend to otherwise. So we hope that you can see the future of Momentum Academy and understand the value of having us as part of your community. All right. Thank you so much. We have a building-level leadership team and we also have a regional-level team. If you guys could stand as our first public community partner comes forward, Miss Laura, can you make your way to the front? Because a mission statement is only a mission statement until we find out if we're delivering upon those promises to our families and to our community partners. So the main purpose of this evening is to make sure that the people who are working behind and in front of the scenes are delivering upon the promises that we made. So our first community partner, Miss Laura, from the St. Louis Teacher Residency is going to share some of her words. Thank you so much, Regional Team, you can take me there.
Thanks. Oh, great. Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Laura Lyons. I'm the founder and executive director of St. Louis Teacher Residency. I'm also resident of this neighborhood, Tower Grove South, and a mom to two young boys, George, age one, and John Allen, age three. This year, our team at St. Louis Teacher Residency has been excited to launch our new partnership with Momentum Academy. Our primary work at St. Louis Teacher Residency is to train and certify effective teachers to work in high-end public schools. This year, we placed five new resident teachers at this campus, Tower Grove South, who will spend this year co-teaching with a mentor and master teacher while building the skills that they need to accelerate student achievement when they step into their roles as lead teachers with Momentum next school year. In my role as the executive director of the residency, I've had the opportunity to visit most of the public and charter public schools in the city of St. Louis. It's my belief that Momentum represents the future of public education in the city of St. Louis. From the time I met Dr. Mean last spring, I was inspired by her vision for this network. And when I stepped foot onto this campus, I saw that the work happening here was exemplary. In classrooms, students are known and cared for while pursuing rigorous, challenging, and interesting work. The leadership team has a clear vision for what students can achieve and what their school and teachers can do to get them there. As an educator, I'm excited by this partnership and how our work as a talent pipeline can contribute to the work happening at Momentum. As a parent, I'm thrilled to know that a high-quality school option exists in my neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Our next community partner is Ms. Brown with the homework program, and she is joining us virtual. Ms. Brown?
Good evening, everyone. Are you all hearing me okay?
We can't hear you. Well, Ms. Brown, it is preparing for her remark. Our next speaker is Jeff from Magnetize, if you can begin to prepare.
Dr. Mean, are you able to hear me okay?
Ms. Brown, are you speaking?
Yes.
Ms. Brown, I can hear you. I'm not sure if they can hear us.
If they can hear us, yes.
Yeah.
It looks like they just froze, so they may try to hop back on in a minute.
Let's all just say great thing.
Jeff, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
And can you say something?
Dr. Mean, are you gonna be okay?
All right. Well, we're troubleshooting our technology issues. We do have a parent, Ms. Westbrook, if you can make your way forward to provide your remark. And then after Ms. Westbrook, we have Ms. Patina, if you are here. Okay? Do we have Ms. Nathan present for your remark? If you could come forward, please. Thank you. We're frozen at the moment.
Yeah, it's frozen now. They can hear. Okay, can she speak?
Ms. Nathan, may you come forward? Ms. Nathan? Thank you. I didn't want to mispronounce your last name, but correct me if I do. Captain Danny, and you can also come forward and be prepared to take the mic. Please do. You can just take the mic here. Thank you. We'll just stand here so that our virtual participants can.
The church and everyone, I think there are lots. I have three kids, and then one has just now. Which is really very big. I really appreciate from all of my teachers. And the principal and everyone who has passed through. I know it was beginning from the beginning, but we tried and we pray for it. I think it's been so wonderful for us. My kids, I can say only that they have been really, really, really beneficial and thank you all for the help.
Hi, Captain Danny. Here at St. John's. Ever since we had this talk from, it used to be another word, it's broken guy, something like that. Now it's momentum. It's changing on years. But the original vision and mission we had was to partner with the school. We here have had a legacy of great education. It was at one time a Christian school. It was abandoned. We had a lot of. People coming in and destroying our property and, and this Momentum Academy came in and just partnered with us. And so what really happened was, it was threefold in our way of thinking that both the community and the school and the church was going to work together to make this place a light, shining light to our children and for our families who are in need of good education. And so you've probably never seen it. There's, we planted, the community came out, Tower Grove South. Neighborhood Association came out with our first principal from Eagle and myself. We planted two trees in the front on Chippewa, and they were that high. You can imagine what they look like now. They're giving shade to our front yard, and it's the thing that is. Incredible that we have it in brought. That we, we are concerned not only with the mind and the heart of your children, but with the soul of your children. And so we partnered with Eagle to make sure that.
This year, if you can make your way up as we hear from our first virtual guest, Ms. Brown?
Good evening, everyone. Is everyone able to hear me at this time?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Katrina Brown. I am the director of program operations with Home Works, the teacher home visiting program. We are in our third year with, with Fox Park. We are doing teacher home visits. We are doing parent-teacher workshops, as well as we are sponsoring two-family dinners this year. And our goal is to increase and do everything we can to promote family engagement. Fox Park has been amazing with building this into their culture. They are committed to making sure that families understand that they have a place at the table when it comes to learning what is going on with their schools, what is going on in the classroom. And they have a voice to be able to tell what's going on at home. We are working to support our teachers to be able to go into the homes to make those goals with families to work on attendance, academics, and sometimes other concerns that a family may have, or if a family just wants extra assistance or something. It is a way for our teachers to really gain insight on what's going on in the home, as well for the families to gain insight on what's going on at the school. So it is an awesome collaboration. It is continuing to blossom. And some of the great things that we have heard is that 95% of our teachers feel like when they make these home visits, they are receiving the tools to really be able to promote goal-making with their families. And 97% of our families are saying that they feel like they have been given the strategies and techniques to actually teach their children at home. So we love to make sure that this connection is airtight because we want families to understand that they are the child's first voice. They are the advocate, and we need them in order to make sure that the culture of the school is always welcoming and inviting for families and teachers to really collaborate on a higher level. So we are appreciative of the partnership and we're happy to begin this 2223 school year with Fox Park again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Neo Yan Shiri. I'm one of our parents from Eagle with this case. One thing I like about Eagle, I can't pronounce that name yet. I'm not used to it yet. But I love, my kids love to pronounce it, especially JCP love. One thing I love about the program, you guys who get scared to receive international students. What I mean by that, the kids can tell you, the teachers can tell you. There is need here for my country, whether you're speaking English or not, especially between the academy. You guys can come here at home and.
It's wonderful. And you guys, you know, have all this work that you guys run through to receive diversity students. And you could see, I would actually last season, something, someone who was going to be in class, they were in progress. And each of them is so dear, and especially the community. I love the scale of this, the people, the amount of my family, and so we like, we love, we think, and so far, this team, including the daughter, the girl. What I mean, they all keep doing, one year, the warning, they're not even tired, they're not particularly sick, and all of them, they're calm. Still, when they're, they're not just fine, often, still, the condition, but you guys have a low dog, you guys have a dog and they see them, and you go to the company. I was allowing that to happen, that can actually hurt me, to be able to be in the ability to raise the eagle to the education. For the last one, yeah. I wish I could tell you, she's not, she's talking in English, she said, I'm a teenager, I'm a little child, I don't know. Well, thank you, thank you for having me. Thank you for the wonderful job that I'm doing.
And next, we're going to hear your partner from Magnetize, Ms. Janet.
Hi, can everyone hear me? All right. So thank you for the introduction. Yes, I am with Magnetize Agency. My name is Jeff Como. I have two girls. I have a six-year-old, a two-year-old, and then I have one other on the way who's still very much inside of mom, if you will. So we've been working with Momentum Academy for about a year now, give or take. But what I have to say is simple. Momentum Academy is truly changing the lives of parents and students alike. We've been working with them for the past year, like I said, developing messaging strategies, personas, understanding the students and what goals they want to accomplish. After attending graduation, I was very fortunate enough to witness firsthand the impact that these teachers, these principals, that this community that Momentum has built upon itself has given to these students. I saw many smiles. I saw teary eyes. I saw a sense of accomplishment. I saw students who believed in themselves. It's my understanding and belief that without Momentum Academy, we wouldn't see such valued members of our community. These students are going places, and I believe that their dreams and goals are being achieved because Momentum Academy, their teachers, their principals, their staff, no matter how small or large they are there, they are building the self-confidence of students alike, and that is something very hard to do. And Momentum is accomplishing that on a daily basis with these students. I mean, I'm telling you firsthand, just from seeing that graduation, it was incredible. It was, it was a special moment, and I can tell you, without Momentum Academy, I don't know if these students would have had the self-confidence they have today. Thank you.
We got this weekend, and next we'll hear from our virtual participants, Corinne. I apologize if I don't.
Thank you. Again, my name is Christian Jude. I'm a chief scholar here, one of the other, and one of your team. Or any kind of them, and like now, Momentum Academy, for many years, they're so proud of the women in this community. This is healthy. We live, we flock to it. This school is, is reflects our neighborhood. Technically, it's not a neighborhood school, but it feels like a neighborhood school. We first, since you see the diversity, and it's not some of the common words, where we see, where you have to factor. We don't have to put these kids together. Their friends find one another, you know, how they are naturally diverse, organically diverse, and feels, it looks like our class. In a very segregated St. Louis, I am so pleased to be able to be here with my children, and maybe even look like. I also value the small school, the small school that there was one class, maybe one or two classes for grade. And somehow, and a lot of kids here, right, the principal always knows my children's names, since they were in kindergarten through our leadership here. And that's just because of all the teachers in all the grades, you know, my kids, and I hope that's not because they're getting into some trouble. But in all seriousness, with that, my children have very different needs. They want to be higher achieving learners, students, and it's good that they need a lot of support. And they are there, for both of them, in very different ways, in ways that were before diabetes, or before, you know, testing. They know who you want to support my children. And I think the same from the families that have already broken up the diversity of the murder theater and community that I'm sharing. And finally, I would say, I see that diversity and I'm bringing them too. In a day when our regular, so under a gap nationwide, I am thrilled to see the diversity all around, come through. And I'm a college student. I never claimed to be a K to 12 districtator, but I am a parent. And when I see my college students, I know who knows what it's like, hasn't it? My fifth grader knew that, big, I mean, from his pre- said must hide your revenue. So I guess that I'm a college student. My fifth grader knew that, and now my sixth or eighth graders know how to do that. My college students know it well. I can't change this team now for the experience of my kids, where my kids, these are disgusting people beyond, because of the foundation that I laid. First people in a community. Thank you.
If we can ask, you're going to prepare the after.
Hello. Um, my children, I have two children currently enrolled at the Fox. Hello. My children, I have two children currently enrolled at the Fox Park location. And we absolutely love everything about Momentum. My children love the fact that it's right down the street from their mama's house. And they feel extremely a part of the community, even though that's not really the neighborhood we live in. But that's my mama's neighborhood, and that's my school's neighborhood. Both of them go by. And they love everything about Momentum. They love all the sports that they're offering. Now, I have a son who's would like to be athletic, but he's just not. And my daughter, she excels within athletics and academically there. My son has a few IEPs that the school meets excellently with his needs. He goes through speech and he goes through OT for his high sensory issues and his current autistic diagnosis that we got this summer. Everybody welcomes them with open arms. It's like a whole, it's like extended family all the way around, from staff to the students and parents as well. And we just hope that we can continue to have Momentum be a part of our family when their younger sister starts kindergarten next year. And when their youngest brother, who just turned one this year, can start kindergarten there in a few years as well. I would actually love to see a preschool program actually open up through them, because I know a lot of other charter public schools are currently offering that as well. But I understand, as my husband understands as well, if you don't have the people or you don't have the money, it is kind of hard. But yeah, everything, we love everything and everyone. And we also take part in the summer program at Gravelway Park. And they have so much fun there that my daughter is jealous that my son gets to go because of his IEPs, and she can't understand why she can't go. So the fact that my child is upset that she can't attend quote-unquote "summer school" just cracks me up. But that to me shows me that you all as a school are doing something right. And because I know I sure as heck did not want to be in school any more than I needed to be. So, thank you, and have a great time.
Good evening, all. I'm Kent Peterson. I've had the pleasure to serve as a governance consultant to board at Momentum the last 20 months or so. Over that time period, I want to highlight, as others have talked about, the importance of rigor and robust teaching and instruction, rigor and robust in community partnerships. I want to hold up that this board at Momentum has taken their job with great seriousness and great intentionality. They are as focused on doing their job and improving their work as the board, and intentional about that as they are about helping to create an environment where students grow and develop as well. Over the last 24 months, this board has completed two different self-assessments. So at the beginning of the work, they completed a self-assessment, and then a couple of months ago, they did a self. I wanted to hold out a couple of things that I think are particularly important to highlight. They show remarkable strengths in a number of areas. Two, I think, are critically important. Their attention to school and legal compliance, doing the basic blocking and tackling of good governance has been a rock-solid point for them. And a complementary factor to that is the environment they've created at the board level for really being able to ask good, hard, challenging questions, and having an environment and openness with school leadership to be able to get really honest, transparent answers. So those things emerge as strengths for this board. Interesting, over the period of the 20 months, the two assessments show, just as we track math scores and gains for students, we're tracking improvement areas for the board, and they've shown a couple of really interesting gains. One is the intentionality with which they actually look for the very best practices for how boards function. And out of that work has grown some smarter approaches to communication, both internally and externally. One of their growing strengths is their communication strategies outside the school, trying to ease support for both the school and education generally. They've also taken care of building in better new board member recruiting, onboarding, and training strategies. Up next for this board, areas they've identified that they want to continue to improve on and work in is proactively listening to staff and education experts about what their needs are in order to accelerate learning, and sharpening the saw some on their practices for really looking at, understanding, and using data to make more informed governance decisions. It's been a pleasure to watch them work. Their attention to their own improvement, I think, is part of what sets an environment for growth and development sort of system-wide at the school. So thank you for letting me share this evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. What an honor to be here. My name's Anna Martinez Shropshire. And I was a partner at the Opportunity Trust when I got a chance to meet Miranda and team. One of the ways by which we decide whether or not we make investments is by really looking at the quality of the leader, and really looking for three things that Lenzioni names in one of his books, which is hungry, humble, and smart. In our experience with Miranda and team has consistently been that they are all hungry, humble, and smart. When we looked at their end-of-year NWEA data in terms of projected proficiency, we saw that across the board for both ELA and for math, there was at least an upward tick of 7% in both content areas across their schools in terms of increase in projected proficiency. And we saw three campuses that had double-digit growth, Tower Grove South, Gravelway Park, and Fox Park, where we saw fourth-grade students meeting proficiency at higher levels alongside fifth graders, and the same was true at the other two campuses. In addition to that, as part of engaging in our work, Miranda and team underwent a rigorous diagnostic process with the New Teacher Project, a national organization. And we really looked at what the quality of instruction was there, and two things that really stood out to us as strengths that are contributing to these academic growth areas were that students were spending 80% of their time on grade-appropriate assignments, scoring above the national average in both ELA and math. And teachers were using high-quality instructional materials sourced from officially-adapted curriculum. So 100% of assignments reviewed in both ELA and in math were from the official curriculum. We believe that this is rooted in Miranda's ability to cast vision, to operationalize it with clear strategy and tactics, and to inspire, invest, and coach others to operationalize the vision that she set for the school. It's an honor to walk alongside her, and I look forward to many, many more years of seeing her lead, her team lead, and students at Momentum win year over year.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Val Leder. I graduated here, I'm a parlay first, graduating class pretty proud myself. One of the things I've been hearing from my people's speech is community, as a student, that is one of the things I value the most here. As amazing teachers, this is great, very commensurate, more, and as a student, it made me feel that love, that support. Here and still in high school, I'll come back, I'll pick up my siblings, I'll come to this, and still, still we can still talk to them. My child is amazing. We also know that Agro Style and all of the Women's Academy values character virtue, and as a senior too, I really focus on is responsibility, diligence. I'll be, I'm seniorizing for now. I'm ready, I'm closing over. But I still have nine months to just push through. And one thing that I keep in mind is diligence, perseverance. I pushed through this last year, and that was really instilled in me as I was at Eagle for the big year. And then responsibility, every time, every time I want to just put on something, I hear some injuries in my hair keeping me going. So I just want to say, all of the Women's Academy, thank you.
But I'm not in the sixth year at Momentum. When I had my prayer was that be helpful, strong, and careful as a young Christian. I would love to say that the community is a great force there. Like the Father said, Messiah is our church that unites. And everything that they have done, like my son has had friends all around, all around his home, they do. He actually lives in a town, but he has friends everywhere, like around, everywhere he goes. But the school has gotten him from kindergarten. He's starting down here, he is now, I'm gonna call him that, his principal, and he loves that. But I am so grateful that they not only care about my son, but him completely, this whole, he's a whole child, a whole person. I actually had to send a message yesterday because we had to put our daughter in. And I was like, if it's weird tomorrow, please, you know, just don't, you know, think it's crazy, but it's normal. But I mean, immediately, everybody was like, I got, I'm so sorry, you know. But I'm grateful that I can reach out. Because not even through Dojo, I can text, I can call, because we have that kind of relationship, it's relational. We have principals that we can talk to, that we can touch. And even our children, that they're not afraid of it. When I was still, I didn't talk to my principal, like I didn't want to get part of it. No, but it's my life with Momentum. You know, old people. But they have that, they can go through, and they can feel love, and we're black in our home, where I can help with homework. I know somebody at Momentum, and so I am grateful, I am grateful for the community that the school is in, and how they're a partner with the school to help care for my child.
Thank you. I have a second question, because I know we're at a two-minute one. Yeah, okay, so we'll do those two, and then we're good. Okay.
I'm ready to go tonight. I didn't know what to expect when we first took my son to live with me. It was, you know, we had everything in mind that we wanted for him to educate, and, you know, for him, how, how to help him grow. That was, it's a part of it, is what I want. I mean, Ms. June was his favorite teacher, and now he's my friend. And, I mean, she was one of his favorite teachers. And to see him run into school and hug her, and her be excited to see him in the morning, as I'm excited to see him in the evening, you know, that's a good feeling. You know that your kid is being well taken care of. I mean, I get calls or texts anytime, maybe a little bit off. You know, and, I mean, that's, that's great. It's all I can find, you know, and to hear all these testimonies, you know, from all these different faces that, you know, I, I certainly go to basketball. And to see, you know, some of the basketball moms, and to say, I had to see these kids grow, and my son is here today. I mean, it's all amazing, big big brother. You know, but, I mean, to see all these kids grow and to be nurtured, and to hear all these stories like mine, you know, about each individual, each school, you know, I mean, it's the same story, no matter where the school was. Tower Grove, Tower Grove South, I mean, you hear these stories about each principal, each teacher has touched our kids' lives. I mean, that's what they mean it. My kids are treated like I was three my kids, like I was three Doki, and they were at my house. And that's how I feel when I drop them off at school. You know, from the person that goes to lunch to the custodian, being a custodian with the high school. You know, it was really weird to see, he kept calling Mr. Ross. And I started to move off the cross, and I'm like, pardon me. You know, but he, Mr. Ross, he made sure that he knew that, that's Mr. Ross. I'm like, okay, Mr. Ross. So we get a little bit of meaning, and then go, you know, to see all of this, and to see all of it, you know, all, not just at this location in my school. So, I mean, thank you.
Hi, can everybody hear me? My name is Steve Miller. I'm a dad. I've got two kids, Grant and Jude. They're three-in-one. And I also serve as the senior pastor at Messiah Lutheran Church on South Grand. We are located right next to Momentum Tower Grove East. And our church is very invested in the community. We helped run an affordable housing project about five years ago, redeveloping some houses. And it's been our privilege as well to support our community by supporting Momentum Tower Grove East. One of the ways we do that is we run an after-school program that helps serve some of the students who also attend Momentum Tower Grove East. I've had the privilege to hang out there with the kids after school on Mondays for more than a year. And through the pandemic, when many of them were virtual and had no place to go because mom and dad were working, or mom was working, or grandma was working, and that's where they were staying, we got to spend time with them. And during that time, I've seen two impacts that Momentum. And really, that's the impacts of the teachers and the principals. I've had the privilege to know several of the principals and many of the teachers, and they go above and beyond when it comes to these kids. And I've seen the extra hours they've put in. I've seen the compassion that they have, that these kids are getting a quality education, the kind of education where they are able to excel and succeed. I've seen the impact that they've had in the long hours. Another impact I've seen is just in the students, because as a community partner, I've been able to see a number of these students mature over the years. And I've seen as they've learned math and reading, as I've worked with them. And the other impact that I've seen, which is kind of tangentially related, but I have seen families that otherwise would not have considered public education for their children in the city of St. Louis, that something about the mission of Momentum Academy to provide both a quality education, but also the kind of education that teaches their kids' character. I've seen families that would not have considered a public education in the city of St. Louis that have because of Momentum. And that's an impact that I think is very significant for our community, because it keeps kids who are in our community. And, uh, and that's an impact, uh, that I think is very significant, uh, for our community, uh, because it keeps kids who are in our community also learning in our community. I think that's really, uh, important, uh, for, uh, for, uh, vitalized communities and the kind of communities that can thrive. And I hope to see, uh, Momentum Academy continue in the future because I think that impact is really important. And someone needs to be an advocate for it, and I see them doing that. So, uh, it's a privilege, uh, to serve in the way I do and, uh, and to see these fine educators do the job that they do. Um, and I thank you for, uh, listen to me for a few minutes.
Thank you. Well, okay, P, I don't know about you, but I have a question. Um, this has been a hard couple of years, I have so many D members who just came to support P. And I want you guys to say, and did you hear what our community should have said about us? Did you hear what our family said about the sacrifice and the work and the long hours that you guys have been taking that, stay to P? See numbers stand up as I make sure I follow the case better. Uh, I can't believe you, you can't believe that. Thank you, thank you, P.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and the, the team and momentum. I'm gonna, um, hand the microphone over to our questioning chair, please, Taylor, to provide, um, the closing remarks. Thank you, Martha, and thank you for your time and your testimony. May this, this class of leaders and teachers, it just brings them in. It's been a rough two years, and you know that as peers, you know that as faculty and staff here. Today, we have the opportunity to cheer off our school. And we applaud this community for what you're giving back to the children. We saw leaders, that and for, are nearly to be in the eyesight of those children, to see what they're doing in the classroom. As a commission, that's why we're here, we care about them, whether they're in St. Louis or Kansas City, we care about them. And we're pleased to know the leadership this school has, it's gonna make a difference. It's gonna move you in the right direction. And we look forward to visiting you during the break. Thank you for being here tonight and for your just, um, yeah. Thank you. We're now gonna take a short five-minute break and start the board interview, um, and then crush it up, set it up, and move by. And you're welcome to say, and, um, listen to that for key P, but you're not, we'll give it to Mike. Well, for those of you listening virtually, the same online, I'm not welcome to say, uh, we'll keep the live stream on for the, the board watching video. So we'll, we'll brief the theme about seven or five. Figure out, um, so that you can hear everyone around this table and say in your view, um. So Peggy, if you wanna, I don't think you need to use the microphone, we're just, that's what I'm trying to figure out is.
Should we move, can we move this closer? Who's, oh, whoever's gonna talk, okay.
This has been an honor to get to sit and sit with the base of that one. We've done that and then for four years, it's happened and we had to do everything by zooming, and that may be a long part of it. But we bring to you, as a mission, years of experience of loving and caring about a public education, not only in this state, but wherever it may be. So we're honored that you're here, we're, I know you realize, as board of directors, you are the foundation of everything we do. Trailing down to what that new leader guard is, one of you. And you know, I commend you for your time and for your willingness to commit and your dedication to this school. Uh, we, I was a senior, I served on my district co-board for three years. I served on the board of the association for six years and was one of the tax presidents. So there is a commitment from all of us, here at J. I, I've been in the, I started out as a teacher, became involved with charter schools, health, I don't know, maybe I'm not anymore, I'm, I'm still. This is, this is institute special, so I went to Missouri and I. I'm just, I'm, I'm watching, you know, my own, pretty much making this movie. Another one there in the left hand corner, in, with Ingrid, I don't know if you can hear me, there's, yeah. And where are you tonight? Probably on somewhere.
I'm in Car, I'm in Carthage.
She also, that's a world of experience, and I wanted to particularly to, um, see her because we walked into a kindergarten classroom today, and looked very, looked up at us, and she said, they all go to the monitor. So I wanted to see that, um, there, I know that we've all, um, we just want. That's a little bit about it, I'd like to tell us how long you've been there, uh, you're starting on the meeting, uh, here and. And any other information that you don't, you're pregnant for us to understand as you're before.
Good evening, my name is David Simmons, I have served on the board of six years. Uh, I'm a attorney, I work at the central, at the downtown half since Jameson was in nineteen ninety-nine, Washington, Boston. Originally from Kansas City, very small town, Boston, sorry, um, came here and made my life, I went to law school, lived in the city, um, up until, um, yeah, I mean, I got my tuition kids, so, um, went down, down in, um, South County now, uh, with them. Now, I don't know if you know, like, a long time ago, it's been a long time to be on this board, to see what's going on this. Yeah, I'm, so, I do, I serve on, I serve on these schools, uh, for this community, uh, now I'm the chair of Lex, and I attend all community meetings. I'm not even, I'm chair of the board, I don't, I don't, I'm not the chair, um, so I've been with, I've been with, you know, with them, it's been ten years. Um, I live in the city and, um, children in the city, I don't know, I don't know how to leave someplace, I'm on my sidewalks. You know, when you raise kids, you were raised in the city, you can't step on curbs, well, that is, like, I mean, curves, tell them they can't step on the curves. So we've been, it's smaller and I've seen all of them, very, um, I'm the chair of the board, and we've spent a couple of weeks with that. The board's actually just genuine, this has been a near the board meeting, so. We are transitioning, you know, basically the last two, many divisions transitioned more from sky, um, and moving the board, moving schools forward. In any way that we can see in terms of investment, um, one that did the best, a lot of it. And we really, we've seen, we've invested a lot in this transition. But we will talk about recognizing the investment in our staff. But we will talk about recognizing the investment in our staff. And we had to return it, they just didn't last too long. I just want to elaborate which the board is, I think. Now, this is in the very series of commitment on the board of our board members, many of our board members have been with us substantially around the time. And I think that's really good and they're committed over the next several years to get this process moving forward in a substantive way.
Hi, I'm a little bit, I got one, I'm trying to agree with the board's very simple list. And sure that they're, where I'm working, we've been in the works of this down for thirteen, fourteen years. Love the city, always with every state and trying to really change ourselves to be experienced. And this group of those people, and we're seeing that as well. It's been a wonderful privilege to follow our best family, and even served as the president of this board and we're happy to share it. And yeah, I can, you know, to build up a little bit, just to tell you, we have, we're not only involved in the book, we're a vision studio on a different. Leadership, we have, we're trying to see this student development. We're open to the relationship. Serve kids, help parents move on this movement.
Good evening, everyone, so my name is Balaji Abey. I'm with the board a little over four years, I serve as a secretary, right now I'm serving in the department of committee. Professionally, my background is engineering, so I do my trade. But I've spent last sixteen years in various supplies and leadership role. For example, I've been on operation, movement, operation, efficiency. Personally, the reason I'm on the board is because I live in the neighborhood, very used to tarot style of the school, I have young kids that are potential momentum students in the future. And you know, once you got, first of all, the city and you have kids, one thing you realize very quickly is the option, our limited, less limited here, non-existent. In most cases, to have your kid have a safe learning environment. And rather than doing with all my friends, they would just pack up and leave, I want to part with the mission, which is to love the state and city. And I've been just been an hour to be part of, be part of board and work on some of the foundations they can work on. I believe we're in a pretty good spot right now to be able to achieve, build on the momentum we're already in and to be able to achieve the focus goals in China.
I'm Peggy, I've been on the board for four years now. I've been, I'm currently on the school performance committee, I'm also secretary now. I guess I'm just, you know, I come from the county, I'm a senior, and I married my husband, he's been a baby boy. And so that's me, we both have been a baby. And I'm glad I'm twenty-two, because I went to like, after I graduated from college, I grew up in Manhattan and Chicago. So as a result, I never see the same movement. And so I told my, well, I mean, no one area, I'm thankful for my mom to take us to eat and that's why I'm having a child. So, so you know, I've been living there for twenty-seven years, I'm a layman. And so, you know, I, my background is marketing and almost years ago, I was a brand marketing manager for various companies. And I decided to continue work and raise our children. And a friend of mine said to me after, like after we graduated, wanted to high school. And she said, you know what, we need to market the company over here at our church. And I said, why? Well, that turned into being the director over the work of preschool. That turned into, that helped us every kind of work in the preschool, that turned into starting a, a summer camp, I'm getting a chance, with a hundred, two hundred and sixty or something. And I'm just telling the person of the day, I'm going to show that I am a popper, you know, so if something comes to me, I'm going to find like a fix it. And during the summer, I realized I was a fifth grader who did not read the book. So our summer camp program is very stampede, very strong in my opinion. So I had about five years ago, I've been doing it for ten years now. And I realized, I mean, at the time that they took me down the public school, just like the whole thing. And so, you know, I tried to help out in better ways. And so education is extremely important to me, my third education board. And I've been on over the years, and so I am committed to make sure that there is definitely. So we have to be there in order to give a great education. So that's one of my, I'm excited about, I'm excited about where we're going. And the strategic plan of this kind of place is extremely exciting. I just cannot wait for us to go and to do it in quick action, so it's meaningful.
Good evening, I'm Amy Chen. I have been on board for two and a half years. And I am the chair of the school performance committee on the board. I professionally am education policy center. My background is in economics, I have a PhD in economics. And my day-to-day work involves copying the US Department of Education as well as DCE as well as local education agencies. Use data and evidence to drive decision making. And that's really part of my passion, effectively, to make sure that decisions and educational policies are driven by evidence and not of any. And, you know, for fifteen years, I've been looking at the data and just seeing what a powerful impact excellent schools and excellent teachers have on student life. And really wanted to be part of that action locally. And so I joined the board and it's been such a rewarding experience to work with. Board members were so dedicated to work with, the leadership team and the school leaders and the teachers were just so dedicated every day, putting in the long hours. Making sure that first of all, they have better life opportunities. So I really look forward to talking with you. I have to apologize in the very, I have to duck out right away to talk, you know, with the gap in childhood, I'm looking forward to talking with you.
So let's, to the, the board group, we'll start with Patrick Davis, who's the next one, sort of one of the books. You know, we want to listen to the phone for you. So, I figured you could, you could, you could, I think.
I think I heard Judith say, Patrick, can you unmute? So I will simply say that my bandwidth is a little muffled. Can you hear me well? I'm not sure if you can hear me. At, at least wave if you can hear me.
Patrick, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, but I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Okay, go ahead and. He just keeps, he just keeps, so let's try somebody else. Melissa, can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I thought we had the sound figured out. Melissa, can you try again?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Well, rather than, while, while we're waiting to do that, we're just checking out the chat, we're not even doing this chat. Because you're, during the first, you've got to contact it. So, Patrick, there's, there's a question about young people, well, he's, he has seven age, junior league baseball team here for. Great, well, he actually started grade school, now we're here at high school. And so he's famous for great stuff at high school, his background is finance management. He's going to be very involved in the, in the, about programs and that, that lovely. And he has a wonderful, very good team. And they have the ability to open up this, rather than, is it on, we just begin sending them. We've done more than.
Melissa, can you talk to these now?
Sorry, what did you say?
Thank you, hold tight for one second.
Okay.
We might have gotten sound to work. Melissa, can you, Melissa said you're already unmuted, can you just say hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
He just looks enthused, so I, I take that as a yes.
Coming through you. Patrick, did you want to say hi as well?
Can you hear me now? I, I can hear Melissa, but I can't hear everyone at the academy as well.
All right, Courtney, they'd like to hear from you next.
Courtney, why don't you unmute yourself and actually introduce yourself. Courtney was born on the board in part because he, he worked in a job. Just, or by ways to engage. Then he couldn't engage directly with the community. He's coming to go and support him with how, the role and the vision for it. So Courtney, can you introduce yourself?
Hello, can y'all hear me now? Everyone can hear me at the academy too as well?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, just making sure. All right, so I'm Courtney Stevenson. I am, my background is senior program director at YMCA. I oversee one of the largest before, at the care program, youth, youth programs in the state of Missouri. I have been on the board for the past seventeen months. I'm one of the newest members to the board. I came in part of the change for the board. I am excited to see what we're doing and where we're going. My focus is really to make sure we're connecting to the community and make sure we're giving all services possible to our parents. Because those services will connect to our education boards for young people in the schools.
But we just wanted to put in some of the, we're, we're getting all ready. I think, yeah, yeah, but Courtney is part of the water in the region. And very important, probably even David's office, and we're going to do that. When our government is front lining this school, we just want to give it its role.
Ready, we, it's a question we want to go, I mean, first question would be, why do we should transfer to the commission?
So she's already in the board, six years, there's been a lot of transitions within the school system. And one of the things that I'm certainly not trying to spare, we're always asking that. The one thing I know that I've worked on, that's, that's, doing things, we need to do that. I have some background in certain of that as well, but we're using commission, I think, to help us. So, I mean, already, like talking with, seeing something, we had to be a little bit better. That's anything that's, that is, that is, you know, we love where we were, we love where we went, talking to, hiring, just things that we did. And that extra that, we must, must, that should come down to everybody, it's, it's a community, we need to, we need to see how the impact of the end. On that, that comes down to the schools. So if we do things better, if we do things the right way, if we give them the proper advice, we have. These are some of the conditions, we're getting the experience. That's, that's generally the reason why we're being, we're doing this.
Not a piece of means, the net of schools, thank you, sir. You already said that you were right, you were able to force it to keep me with my, that, you know, it's my.
First of all, I just want to clarify, I was just wondering, how are you going to track the progress, really, in life?
I mean, because I think they will be, I hear of these. Put together, one of you. We've got finished, leaving this, on point, we review, creating, in a way which is, which is, which is, and so they're applying for our. Want to reach the schools, not set up, the points committee. And let's, uh, why don't we, uh.
Most of the communities, the primary communities, those that, 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 that. There is, our evaluation, they've also been, we've had much of it. The hiring discussion around that, there's a few, more in that community, and so we're all clear on that.
Taking some of the tools we have and putting upon them are continuing to communicate and learn. The strength of, uh, ongoing communication. What's going well, what's not going well, officially to tell everyone.
I can speak to something academic and that development department. For academic, central part, we have a very specific calendar for when, uh, leadership team reports data. Some data for the annual, the Missouri, now, um, some data are three times a year. Uh, we have the NWPA assessment for the fall, winter, and spring. Uh, and we love those assessments because the winter assessment really shows, um, where we stand in the middle of the year to allow us to do any good work correction. Um, and we also are going to start administering the Google assessment, uh, for the lower today, uh, in early literacy. And that will also be a three time a year. Uh, and then there's data that we have been talking about. We want to know at the board, at the school performance committee, what are the school leaders and what are the teachers doing in the classes for most students? So we actually have a monthly data dashboard where we look at measures such as, um, how frequently are teachers receiving real time feedback, in the moment feedback in the class? How many instances of real time feedback per teacher have occurred over the past month? Uh, we also have, um, measures such as how many meeting meetings have school leaders delivered, uh, with their staff, um, on average, over the past month? Uh, we, and then, um, in this coming year, there is a big project to, um, have intellectual planning and preparation rolled out through all grades in math. This is a, um, a set of very structured meetings in which school leaders are working with staff on how to really internalize and understand the content of the math lessons that they're supposed to teach. And it gives them an opportunity to really practice very specific strategies for how to deliver that content. And so we have specific measures of what percentage of teachers are showing, are demonstrating these strategies in the classroom, um, that they've been internalizing in those intellectual preparation meetings. So lots of different types of data flow on different things.
And a follow up question, I'm impressed with your strategic plan and your strong goal of being able to accomplish. But I did not see budget. Um, I'm used to working with lots of strategic plans and maybe constantly that they're going to budget to work from. And, and what I mean, is that being developed?
Well, you may not have asked in the question, we have always had a bunch of them. And we're always talking about our budget and what we're actually doing compared to the budget and whether that's. Or, right, uh, I think some of the challenges we've had right now, we've had an extended contract. Um, we are also working with our head ops, we have tracked the shift. Uh, they've conditioned us with paying this over, still have a little bit back. Uh, and that's what, you know, certainly I'm paying more for it. We go off the case. That means that if we don't have any, they're going to. They're getting this over the box, melody.
Um, your organization over time has been intriguing about being on security. This is, you're located in churchies. Department of Churchies. Your previous game of Mons of Pride was cool. We heard from the pastor this evening. As of for the rest of the concern with my rights. This has been a challenging issue for us, not in the sense that we have ever actually been secretary. Yet we are in four heels, four work, four in school building. And we have partners within our churches. In fact, initially, our churches all have the four. Four student production that was available through the churches. We are now using the law to provide that access. One of the, one of the reasons that we didn't split from Open Sky was the constraint with. There really was a religious organization put on us in terms of pirate. So it's the, you know, we realized that that was complicating matters for us. Uh, I would say that in my explanation, we, we have never been secretaries in our, should we continue to do that? The two pastors we spoke, Mr. Miller and Mr. Tanning, both see this school as part of their churches outreach. Support for the community. And we appreciate their partnership, their willings, that what we're watching. We don't give them any money other than the leases, which obviously we owe them. Or usually their buildings, and we work together with everyone who cares are needed. For instance, because we typically share costs for many buildings or for years. Maybe because they need to be paid. But there's never, it's a board, it's never crossing that line. It has schools from that, but we do have more relationships, we want to treat. I'm going to start with.
Do you have any questions? Not yet, it's not like, trying to use the exhibit to just, and she had a question. Teacher, attention, and then a tough issue, and Patrick COVID relentless, the worst of some ways for our building principals. And HR does their job of coordinating to support to recruit, retain these people that are hired to teach our children.
Yeah, I would definitely put a monkey wrench in, I guess, hiring or eating these days. And everybody is experiencing the, um, low amount of quality people that come work for them. And so, well, this is no exception. But I think one of the things that we're doing that will, um, keep us above the rest is our coaching and having kind of a little bit to some of the coaching originally for our teachers. Uh, now, and I think with that coaching, it's definitely a more confident with their coaching and showing them that we care about them. And so as a result, um, they're, they're able to, you know, partly back into a strong academic program. And so it's kind of filtering down. And so I know we felt that our attention was pretty good for the school here. And I think a lot of it is because of that, I think a lot of it is because of, um, Dr. Lee's leadership, um, a lot of our inventory. Um, I think I know that she has changed the professor of fellowmen a lot since we separated from our previous management. Coming in, um, and now she's really addressing the concerns of our teachers. And they feel like they're heard now, which that doesn't indicate, um, previously. And so I think that is one of the reasons why our attention was a little bit higher than what it had been in the past. Um, I know that we have changed, um, our value to make them more competitive. Uh, we can, and so that's another plan for us as far as, um, being able to retain. But I think it's also our mission, our vision, and us being able to communicate that clearly. And they get consistent across the school, also abandoned there. And so when, um, the teacher's fifteen, the teacher is right into what is going on. And I think they see what Melissa is trying to do. And, and there are more active ones today. So I think those things are the things that are going to set apart from us. I think that's the thing that's going to retain our.
We had substantial teacher turnover in the fall. We had very little teacher turnover in spring, in that period. And I think that the real question is some of the strategies that Patrick said we put it in place. Um, and we took, we put it in place. When research, abundant research shows that when teachers feel supported by their administration, then they will stay. And all of this emphasis on real time feedback, on having school leaders in the class and working directly with the teachers. Uh, I feel that made a really big difference in the spring. And we're really proud that, um, among the teachers who were invited to continue into the fall, more than eighty percent of them accepted and continued into the fall. And that was, um, that is one of our.
I think that question is a challenge. Where public school leaders, they didn't get the initiative. Everybody does.
And in every part of the teaching, we project the direct. Granted, it works, and the team works very hard to build thinking, to do the thing they have. But also the community, the residents, the area to provide an opportunity as well as to student teaching connection. Um, one of our, one of our supporters from the faculty, we can give supporting their, they saw the issue of certification. Teaching systems, and I think we had at least one of those, who is perfect. They, they, one of them, exploiting the high grade. And she will be certified and will be a teacher next year. And we're contributing with the expense of that. Um, Kathy and I met a number of years ago with some of our teachers who had been with us for a number of years. And Kathy, why do you say, because you want to know? They have inside world, we can, we can teach you. Of those, I think we met seven of them, five of them are not leadership principals. She couldn't give them, and so I think Kathy and I both know that problem. But I think part of the thing, they, they learned a warning to me, we reported that before. And hopefully was the take on more of the, and our work in Open Sky was not working. Because one of the main things they raised were, this isn't worrying. That it was starting, my question, whether Open Sky is doing a good job. Well, I think Kathy and I met with those teachers, one of the teachers was shortly after we joined the board. And then twenty nineteen, the executive committee had a couple of times the opportunity to trust. To see whether they might be able to help us. Let's move forward, or their suggestion was Open Sky is not serving them well, if you might consider. And then in, uh, winter, late twenty twenty, uh, we began a rare talks with Open Sky about, separating from, obviously, they reached that decision in spring, in twenty twenty. Ask you to be in charge of. The whole structure.
It's difficult for us to know. Do you have a strategic plan and administrative board members? They thought of anyone in place because that could be a real loss.
I'm clear, uh, we're looking to Orlando to develop a conversation plan and experience that. To certain sessions, we're waiting to be giving regional level responsibilities to individual principals where they have strength. We've seen that in the past, where one principal handled a lot of excessive stuff with the organization. So, yeah, I would say, I don't think we've been so little, she hasn't said, you know, this is my identity. But she clearly worried and developing her needs to step in if possible. And the board, um, as I say, they work pretty carefully, pretty fast. Certainly David and I have partnered with us separately, maybe, maybe more than we expected originally by the chair. Uh, but Rod, who just presented from Melissa, um, and co-chair, uh, by me was creating. Uh, I don't know if Danny's got somebody in mind, or you may have to recruit someone to deserve that one. But one of the things we do, and we're going to be more explicit about that, we do add board members to help us find new board. So for instance, they said Kathy brought Patrick to the board, uh, former board member brought David to the board. Liam Hart, who was not on board today, but he brought Courtney Stevens to the board. And we're going to try to reform a lot more.
So, um, Kathy's question is, um, how is the teacher, are the resident teacher program helping with quality?
Well, I, I'm actually, I don't think we, as clearly new partnership, so I don't think we know much about it. Other than what we have found from past experiences with the teachers who started with us. And in several years, who started with us as student teachers, came on as teaching assistants, so they got to continue. And then becoming teachers, and in some cases, they're actually now leadership position. So I expect that it's going to be very helpful because coming into a lead teacher role, knowing the culture, knowing how the organization wants that they receive, and to a certain extent benefited from some of the coaching and lead. And I would expect it's going to, if not, it's made a transition to being a back to teachers. A much quicker transition than with the case of coming, just what you're asking.
Thanks again. Um, David, I heard you, um, when you said why are they transferring? Um, and I know it's been pretty intense here. You have to tell, um, Mark, maybe even better than watching. And we get this thing moving and there's time to get it. That's not going to stop, the vast system will be available. Like, we need to know a little more. Our expectation is that all the things you're telling us now, that's just the first step in for you to take charge of your own destiny. And we believe that we can, and we believe that we will. And we hope, you know, this is very true, we can see much of our problem. And you have to see it because we need to use a lot of stuff around this thing. But I, I did hear you, you pretty, you said you, I think you need help.
You have to actually, at the end, you know, take a step out and do it. Or take a step into raising, to, 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 to some of that, you know, considerable, I mean, management company was there. You know, one, two step, and we asked the board members. Next year, we're going to meet time, we'll engage your teachers, we're going to be, you might be nervous meetings. Always step, they want to do it, they want to take charge, they want to control. I don't think that's going to be involved. They're very, they've done, they've done the best you can.
Your strategic plan threatens to be stored by alignment between your board members. Why don't you want to see it become a real clear, um, ready, a momentum, a candidate in all of the building?
I think this is about a very personal observation. When I joined the board, the principal in school, I think she had her eye on the theme we're thinking of. We have an engine in the thinking. And she said that year, getting to know her fellow leaders and getting to see some of the challenge. Um, very different approaches, for any reason, you know, getting to the school. So when she said, you know, is that we have to build a regional structure that's going to bring those schools into alignment. Maybe her colleagues. They, her colleagues, that yes, because they knew she knew what was going on. We now do that. Correct a regional director and bringing them structures, we have regional people in place relative to academics. To student culture, to school culture in general, that I think is what's going to make a difference. We would not get on that. We were expecting that Open Sky was doing that for. And so now we have people for our job. With with many of that.
A lot that's going, how are you engaging your community with stronger communication? About this overall change and playing because you are a community, so how are you pressing those communications?
That's one of our. Everybody figured that out, but Kathy and the marketing specialist, Courtney, will be helping us figure out how. We need more communication to be more independent and school leaders, this is much more effective to reach it out. But that is, we recognize that. We have our own goal and something that we have to put on.
One of the things that I saw. In your assessment, as your survey appearance was. A need for stronger discipline and breaking behavior problems, especially along the mental health area. So how are you planning to address those?
I think that's a great question. Culture and and having norms for behavior that are uniform across all four schools is central to our strategic plan. And even, you know, at the beginning of this year, or in the summer of professional development, principals and V were getting training. On sort of having uniform expectations for behavior across all four schools. So that's one critical corner of our strategic plan. We were fortunate to be able to hire more mental health professionals as part of our test. So that's another very important part of our strategic plan. And then as as we roll out on uniform expectations for. For culture, we also have plans in place to measure social and emotional learning and skills of our scholars. We are rolling out the panoramas survey, which we've been doing several times over the course of the year, which has, you know. It's a very well tested survey that is used by many schools to look at social emotional skills. And the mental wellbeing, mental health and wellbeing of not only our scholars, but also.
Plans that not these happen missions assist you in any. That you think a lot of the.
I was going to say, yeah, that's our charter.
Our our plan is that we will have a monthly commission meeting, a meeting. And we will discuss and be brief and. Read more of your information that you shared and then we will actually go in October. We're wanting to be slow, I mean, the paperwork that I have my email last night wasn't like. And try to, if we have some reasonable questions, that it's a lot to cover and we want to do it for the job. We want to be the best as authorizers that we can talk to. But I mean, we want to do our job. Our whole mission is committed to high quality education. Where are the needs? And that that has been our goal from the very first time we all met each other. And you're going to know, if you say yes. Then give it to me. That is a form of contact back, we will be checking on that and holding your posts to the cloud. Thank you for your time tonight, it was great to meet you and understand. Your walks of life and what you're ready. Your desires and your goals for this school are outstanding. They include work. I I can tell that you're already committed to that. And it's always hard to recruit board members if you tell them what you really do. And how much time I really spend. And as super, as everyone said, I want you to this year try to count. I was I was blown away, he said he couldn't afford me, he can have the board president, so. I know what you mean. It's starting over, you do have the right frame of mind, because your primary role is teaching. And I love that you all call the scholars, because they want, and they need to feel that too. Thank you for your time.
Good, thank you, I I apologize. You know. Just try, just try to get it on, you know.
You get it, you do probably do a lot of that every day.
Yeah.